Good evening and welcome to our school committee meeting of this December 19th, 2018. We would like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Hope you'll all rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we bring our student representatives up, I just want to remind everyone that we are being broadcast live on cable and recorded for later rebroadcast. And now I'd like to bring our student representatives up. From the middle school, we have Katie Huff and Molly Hare. You can slide that microphone over and please.
Hello. My name is Molly Hare and I'm an eighth grade student. I'm here along with Katie Huff, who is also a seventh grade student. We were here from Douglas Middle School to discuss the current events throughout the past month. Everyone is settling in and adjusting to the new schedules. The students have moved right into this year and are having many laughs with their friends and teachers as well as challenging learning experience to help them grow.
The sixth graders have been working extremely hard and adjusting to the middle school. Many have become very close with their teachers and have made many new friends. The seventh graders have been boosting their grades higher and higher every day. They also have been much more active in making change to their community. Lastly, the eighth graders have been trying their very best in their grades, athletics, and are creating many new friends.
The middle school activities are truly begun. The Lego Robotics team had their first Lego League competition on December 8th at Northborough High School where they had an excellent time to get to know each other as well as learn. Moving into the indoor events, the girls and boys basketball teams have officially been chosen. The girls and boys had their first game on December 13th in Uxbridge. They worked very hard and definitely enjoyed themselves. There was also a basketball game for both boys and girls yesterday, which was in fact a home game. At this game, the girls lost, but still did unbelievable. The boys had won their game and were very proud of themselves.
The Douglas basketball teams for the middle school are going very well, but they're still working to be even better. There are some eighth graders who happen to be on JV team in high school and are definitely enjoying the challenge. The girls JV team is on a winning streak of three games. We also have our three of our eighth grade students on the high school indoor track team. They did incredible at their first indoor meet. They did very well. In fact, all of our middle school students had gotten a personal record. Overall, the sports have really taken to new heights.
Our student council has been preparing and working to the best of our capabilities to prepare our Winter Olympics this Friday, where all the students are going to be playing games and working in teams to get to know each other as well. We had a specific group of people that have been working on a food drive. As it turns out, we collected 307 pieces of food to donate to a local charity.
We have been making many plans for this year in hope to make the upcoming months some of the best ones in the school. We are planning for bigger and better things and know that we will make it happen.
This Friday, the 21st, is a half a day for our middle school and we'll meet again in January with a whole new theme of the month to work towards, which is in fact being adaptable and accepting challenge. This past month, everyone has been working to be charitable. By charitable, I mean everyone is trying to be kind and give kindness to everyone. It was a great month to share the gift of giving and to share happiness throughout the school.
Our school has been trying our very best to make this a memorable year for the eighth graders and a new beginning for the sixth. Overall, this has been a great month filled with kindness and positivity. We can't wait for the months ahead. Thank you for your time. It was much appreciated. Have a great night.
Thank you ladies. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Next on our agenda is our public comment and communication section. The school committee always welcomes public comment on items that are within the scope of the school committee's responsibilities. Public comment agenda is reserved for this purpose. So seeing no one for public comment, we'll move on to any old business anyone would like to address in the committee, any new business. Okay, in that case, we'll move on to our superintendent's report. Mr. Mainz.
Thank you. So one thing I should mention yesterday was a very exciting win for the boys team, double overtime, I believe, against Mendon Upden.
Boys basketball?
Boys basketball. I didn't get there for the girls' game. I don't know how the girls did.
You're talking about high school or middle school? Because both were very interesting.
Middle school, yes. I happened to catch a little bit of that and I didn't see the cheerleaders perform, but they had their first game.
Very good.
Good. So I was going to provide a quick update on Douglas Elementary School music lessons because as you know, we came back and we were looking forward, so I was going to report back once we get everything settled in. So presently, there are 64 participations. They may be playing more than one instrument, but there's 64 participations, 17 playing the saxophone, 16 playing the trumpets, 15 playing the flute, six trombones, five clarinets, three percussions, two French horns, and a partridge and a peatry. You heard that? I thought I was going to be really coy. So the participation is great, the great numbers, 64 is really, really strong. And as spring brought to that, we should also talk about the concert that took place the other night at the middle school and also at the high school that were big numbers. I forget the number. I think there's 60-some-odd students in the band at the, no, maybe it's the chorus.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, I only mention that because of all the time we've talked about trying to rebuild the program. It's clearly is turning around and we're really getting some strong participation. So that's the update on the music lessons. The next thing I have there is an update on the Sutton Douglas football cooperative. Because there's been a lot of talk going on, a lot of rumors going on, so I'm going to try to give you a little background in what I've heard and where we're going. So as you may or may not be aware, about six years ago, seven years ago, I forget what it is, I think it's six years, we joined in a co-op with Sutton in football. Previous to that, we had been in with Bartlett for a few years and then they ceremoniously ushered us to the curb. So we ended that. We went in with Sutton. Sutton is the host school, which is very important. They are the school that assumes all of the responsibilities for the program. We are simply co-opping in with them. About two years ago, Brian Janici, who was the co-AD at the time with Mary Sokol and I, ended up going over to a meeting with the superintendent of schools, Ted Friend, Ted McCarthy, the principal, and I forget who the AD at the time was, no longer the same AD, and then a representative for the football boosters. And at that time, there was discussion of Sutton was looking to end the football program. The boosters club was very vehement about keeping the program and we've stayed in, the football program has stayed in place for two more years. Over the past month, there's been some conversations about whether or not Sutton was going to continue to offer the football co-op or not. Interestingly, we were really not part of any of that conversation. That's why I say that this is all sort of was from the outside. We got wind of it and then we became involved in it. There's been some rumblings that Sutton was looking to end the co-op and move into a co-op relationship with Millbury. Primary reasons, field space, expense, numbers, overall performance of the teams. The teams have not been winning very many games. They reached out. I believe there was some communication between Sutton and Millbury. They talked about it at some length and Mary heard of some rumblings that possibly Sutton was going to end its football program and they were going to join up with Millbury, at which point I became involved because the concern there was, there was absolutely no statement of what was going to happen to the Douglas kids who have been playing Sutton football either for a year or for three or four years, now not having a place to play football. Traditionally, what would happen is that they would be grandfathered in, which means that they would go along to the, with Sutton to play at Millbury. The issue that raises is numbers of students under the MIAA regulations and the possibility that if Douglas were part of that, it might move Millbury up to a higher level, tougher competition, which they really do not want to do. They're just looking for some more players. So it appeared that for all intents and purposes, they had struck a deal but left us again by the curb. It did not include us in the process. So I reached out to the superintendent, asked him what the story was. He then realized that a disservice was being done to the Douglas kids, spoke with his athletic director, who then spoke with Millbury, and the concern still was, was Douglas participation going to impact Millbury. I met with the superintendent just two weeks ago as part of the Douglas, the Blackstone Valley meeting for superintendents. He indicated that if we do not, if our players are not grandfathered in, he said that they would not go forward with the relationship with Millbury, which was new because originally that was not the case. There had been some rumors going around that we had reached out to Bartlett to try to become part of their football co-op again. That never happened. We did not reach out to anybody. We have not received anything formal or official in writing from Sutton that their football program has been disbanded as of yet. They had a school committee meeting the same two weeks ago, to which they had a large turnout, again, of the parents of the football boosters looking for the football program to continue. At the meeting that I had with Ted just recently, he is of the mindset that they are not going to continue the football program in Sutton.
Hello?
Join us, Mrs. Sokol.
Join us.
He felt that at this point, it just was not feasible to continue the football program and that he was adamant that they would only join Millbury if now the Douglas kids who were in the program were grandfathered in, to which off the record, we basically just, I indicated to him that I need something formal because Mary cannot pursue another opportunity for our students without ending the co-op that we're presently in. And so at this point, I think he had another meeting coming up, so he probably met this week with his boosters and so forth. I did not hear anything as of yet from him, so I don't know whether or not it has been disbanded. So then the question becomes, if that is in fact the case, that the kids who are in the program are grandfathered, they have a place to go, and then if we want to continue football, students who are coming into the school district would have an opportunity, we'd have to go and explore another co-op opportunity, of which there really are only a few possibilities. To me, the only ones that seem viable, I told Mary that I was not interested in going back to Bartlett only because we had been with them and they ended the relationship. So the two possibilities that I see are Uxbridge and probably Blackstone-Millville. Geographically speaking, it makes the most sense. My feeling is that as hard as it might be to fathom, I mean, we played football with Sutton, so how hard can it be for us to play football with Uxbridge at this point? I mean, we don't get along very well with Sutton in the first place. So those are the two options that we have and all we're really waiting for, because it's really inappropriate for us to go out and pursue a co-op if we do not have something that definitively says our co-op is over.
Right.
So that's kind of where we're at. Mary, I don't know if you want to chime in a little bit. I basically talked about the rumors that we hadn't really pursued anything and so forth, that a lot of what was going on was behind the scene and we were really not part of the process. Sound fair?
That is fair.
That's Mr. Romano coming in from the game as well.
Yeah. Mr. Romano found out, we were at a game and he shared an email that he received that they were no longer going to want to have the co-op. I had not any idea as the athletic director that this was going to happen. And then I heard from the Sutton Athletic Director, pretty much what Mr. Mainz had said. We were not, we were out of the loop the entire process. And it's not something that happens in a week. It's, they had been talking for a long time. So their booster club is very upset by it because their word is sustainability, but they've got numbers, so now they have to deal with their booster club. We really, we're like the cart. We follow the horse. We don't really, it's just our kids. My goal is to have a place for our kids to play that are actually playing now, which is probably the most important. And then if, like Mr. Mainz says, if there are kids interested pursuing an additional co-op. And that's how Millis and Hope Dale used to be. They went to, they merged with BMR and those kids finished playing at Millis and then now it's BMR and Hope Dale. So it's nothing that hasn't been done before.
Right.
So it's just a transition period that the boys that are rostered now will finish in Millbury. And then if there's any new students that want to play, I'd have to find a place for them to play.
Yes. My question was, when it comes to being grandfathered, it's currently rostered, not just anyone in nine through 12 right now?
Correct.
So if you're a 10th grader, didn't play this year, you're not part of the grandfather.
Correct.
You'd have to go to a new program or whatever it might be.
Correct. Yes.
And so for the MIAA numbers issue, they would only count the seven or eight kids from Douglas that are presently playing. They wouldn't count the 200 boys we have in the school. They would only count the seven or eight.
But should it impact the?
So it doesn't change there.
Okay.
So, and I don't, I have heard nothing since the conversation last week that I had with the superintendent in Ted Friend over in Sutton. And as I said, Mary, before you came up, he was pretty, he was pretty much telling me that they were not going to continue with a football program because of the reasons, the finances, the revenue, the wear and tear, and not really having a facility, and a few other things. So they were, they were looking to sort of the numbers, participation numbers and performance. So that's kind of where that was at. Now, behind the scenes, we really can't seek out opportunities, but I'm pretty confident that one of those two schools would accept us.
Blackstone-Millville's already with Hope Dale?
Yes.
So they're presently with Hope Dale.
Right.
Collaborative? Yeah.
Yeah.
And Uxbridge is obviously in a different league. They play in the SWCCLE league, so we would be playing in a different league than the Dual Valley Conference. That's the only differential there. But their, Uxbridge's numbers have gone down and their enrollments have gone down as well. So they, they see that as a viable, obviously it's closer.
Yeah, the proximity is a bonus.
So it could work out. So we would have to come back to you again at some point if this co-op is disbanded. A, we'd have to let you know that upfront and then ask for your permission for us to go out and pursue an additional co-op if that's the case of where we're at.
And we can never be a host school, right?
Well, we could be.
We would have a lot of this.
It would cost us an awful lot of money.
Yeah. And the field space. We really don't have the field space. As much as it would be awesome. We have, you know, the track field, which mostly is primarily the JV soccer field.
Right.
And if we have to dedicate that to football, because they need to practice every day also, we have four, we would have four teams, you know, some kids going later, and just the wear and tear on that one field would be very, very, that would be a lot for.
That would be your practice field as well as your game field.
We would need to find a practice field, because you really couldn't practice on there. Having coached football for 20 years, you can't practice on the game field because you won't have a game field.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's difficult. There's no locker rooms for the opposing team to come and rest. There's no locker rooms and the traffic up there pattern now is already, you know, challenging. And, you know, it's just, you know, the benefit is, it's a gated facility, so the gate would be easy to keep, which they couldn't do over in Sutton. They could never charge. It was just hodgepodge because it's in the middle of a field. It's just, you know, I don't think it'd be possible, you know. It'd just be very difficult to have that in soccer and everything on, just two fields. I mean, if we had a different field, like Mr. Mainz said, that would.
And the other part of it really is that we don't really have huge numbers of participation. So to be the host, you really want to have the majority of the kids and somebody to supplement it. I mean, I think if we were lucky, we might, I think at the high point a couple of years ago, we had 20-some-odd kids throughout the entire program, but we're nowhere near that number now.
We have nine.
Are the currently rostered students aware of what's going on?
Oh, yeah. And they were, they were caught by surprise after the game. The coach called all the parents in and told them that it was no, and so they, they know. And I spoke to parents. They asked to speak with me, so I met with a couple of parents individually and answered the questions, being as transparent as I possibly could be.
Yeah.
So they understand that we, we're really not involved in the planning of disbanding the Sutton Douglas football team.
So thank you for the update. A couple kind of maybe related, I guess, questions. So I'm not surprised to hear that numbers are down, youth football overall, I think is down. This is going to become a problem opening for more and more communities as this goes forward. I want to say, at the very least in Texas, they do like seven-on-seven leagues and stuff like that. Is Massachusetts exploring anything like that to help with participation rates and going more in the flag football route versus the tackle football route?
In my community, they do the flag football. They've done, they went away with the pop one.
At the high school level?
No, in the middle school and the lower grades, they have a flag football league.
Yeah.
And then.
Our kids do have an opportunity to play locally. I think it's Millbury. Did anybody know? No. I think it's Millbury.
That's the million dollar question for youth football.
They can play.
Oh, no, it's probably, I think it's like four different programs that advertise in town, yeah.
Right.
I think Uxbridge, Northbridge.
But when I went down to the middle school, Sherry, Mrs. Ossman, asked how many kids were interested and she had no one to sign up. So that's where I got my number of no-interested parties. But then it was brought to my attention by Mrs. Hayes that there are kids that play that maybe they weren't listening. That's why I had asked Mr. Romano, maybe asking Donna somehow to get a survey out if there's any interest, so we know, maybe grades three through eight, how many kids actively play some kind of football, if it's, you know, so we have some numbers moving forward if Sutton says.
I think I know at least a half dozen at the elementary school level that are playing right now.
Right. So they want, we want them to have a path to continue. We don't want to lose them to go to some other school because we don't offer football in a co-op or something else, so.
I think it's going to be harder and harder to field full 11-on-11 football, you know, going forward. So, you know, again, at the state level, they got to explore some of the seven-on-seven options and flag football options and whatnot.
So if the situation were that they ended the co-op and we were able to establish, let's say another, a co-op with, let's say, Uxbridge, the students who are presently grandfathered would have to make a decision at that point. They could opt to go to Uxbridge. They don't have to go to Millbury.
Right, okay, yeah, which makes sense too. So they can stick with the rest of their Douglas.
So they may want to go with, if we've got numbers, they could go to Uxbridge rather than staying with Sutton. Because Millbury would be a little bit of a ride. I mean, it's 15, 20 minutes to get them there each day. I'm not really a big fan of them being on 146, to be honest with you either, so.
There's a lot of expectations that I know, when I did speak briefly with the athletic director, he has a list of expectations. I've asked for the expectation three times and I haven't gotten them yet.
Yeah.
So if practice is going to start at 2:30, yes, that's going to pose a problem. If it starts at 2:15, definitely a problem. But there's no need to press on that issue until we find out. They have a vote. I think it's in January if they're going to, if the SWCCLE is going to accept the grandfather.
Okay.
But I think the Sutton boosters is pushing very, very hard for them to have it for two more years.
Yeah.
Like extremely.
So is there, is there an issue with overall participation between Douglas and Sutton as well, or is it more of the costs and the facilities for them? I guess, would they explore bringing a third school in?
No.
I think it's the cost.
It's the cost. It's the ruining of the fields. And that's, you know, that's their choice to make.
Although since we were out of the conversation, it's a little hard to pin down exactly what it is.
Yeah. Well, it's also, Sheriff, you know, is it tough to field a team even with the two, the two schools, you know, with Sutton and Douglas? Are they getting enough participation?
Well, you hear two different stories. The numbers say no, but other, everybody says yes. So it's, it's one, whatever they say, you know. It's, I think we have number, we have nine, they have, I think, 20, maybe a little bit more. So, I mean, that is enough.
Which is a viable team, yeah.
If you'd like to free me up, I'm happy to take over the program and coach it. Happy to. Been a while since I've coached.
They don't wear leather helmets anymore, Mr. Mainz.
No.
I think, I think we found better use for your time.
Well, I'm just saying, that's just an option. The other thing was that I, why we wanted to put this on this was, was to make sure that people in town knew that we were not the driving force behind any of this. There's a lot of rumor, there's a lot of innuendo out there as to what we were doing and the stuff behind the scenes. And I got to tell you quite honestly, as Mary and Josh said, we were sort of blindsided by it and we're trying to, you know, get ahead of it now at this point. So that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on?
Okay. Mr. Romano, they'll go.
Here.
Okay, so the last thing I have under the superintendent's report is an update on the Blackstone Valley Superintendent's Collaborative. So they did have a subcommittee meeting, of which Josh is on that committee recently, and then we had a meeting of the superintendents last week. And so a quick update. As you recall, one of the things that we've been talking about is trying to collaborate on programs, courses, and so forth. So two things are in the works. The first is that during the April vacation, they're going to hold a technology, engineering, manufacturing camp for seventh and eighth graders. Presently, they're holding two spots for each of the schools. There's 13 school districts, so it's 26 kids. If they have additional, then they will come back and look for some additional people. And it would be a three-day event. Northbridge has manufacturing, the Ed Hub has it, and Uxbridge has it. And we could also.
We could also host that.
Host it as well because we have the manufacturing here as well.
Yeah.
Okay. And so the process there is to get the relationship between the 13 communities started. And this is also to let the students in seventh and eighth grade know that there are engineering, manufacturing possibilities, should you stay in your home school, because this is going to be that type of collaborative that we're talking about. So that was the first thing. The second thing was that they have agreed to pilot one course in the 1920 school year. Again, it will be based around manufacturing. It'll be an online course, but there will be some face-to-face meetings, either in the Ed Hub in Northbridge, at Northbridge High School, Uxbridge High School, and again, we can host it as well. The consensus was there of the 11 schools that were present at the meeting, 10 were obviously were in favor of it. Blackstone Valley Technical Vocational Regional High School doesn't really need to go with us for a collaborative on manufacturing, and two schools were not there. But the general consensus was that we wanted to have that be the jumping off point to see if in the 2021 school year, can we now expand? Is it something that we can grow and expand upon and start offering more courses? One of the last pieces that I'll share with you, then I'll throw it to Josh, is that when we were talking last week, of all the schools that were there, only one school did not, at some point, do the Massachusetts Math Science Initiative. So there, all the schools except for one were familiar with the whole Saturday model of kids going to a school and having an extended learning opportunity or a lab activity. And all of the schools felt that because of that experience that they think that maintaining this and offering courses and having Saturday sessions will work. Some of the things that come out of it are collective bargaining agreements, funding, informing, forming a collaborative and deciding, you know, what we're going to offer. And then if it's going to get off the ground on 2021, having somebody who would be a director of that collaborative to oversee the classes, student participation, the curriculum, and so on and so forth. So that's, I mean, we have been talking about the whole idea with the Ed Alliance. This looks like a much bigger picture and it could be, you know, a leading activity for the state, because people are asking us about it now. Where are you guys with all of this? So, you know, that's kind of what I had, Josh, you had gone to the meeting and you've been doing some work on pathways and so forth, if you want to update.
At the subcommittee's meeting, we also talked about that if we can get the manufacturing to work, which requires a lot of equipment, which requires a lot of infrastructure, it's too easy to get like an AP microeconomics course running. And that maybe doesn't require so many of the Saturdays and in-person things, but it could be almost entirely online with, you know, the teacher has some office hours in the afternoon where they're available to talk to kids. It can be virtually, so the whole thing could be essentially online. So we're almost looking at, it's like a VHS, but it's more receptive, a virtual high school, but it's more receptive because the teacher is one town over instead of, you know, 10 states over or whatever. So, you know, we looked at a couple of models and we all have, every school in this possible co-op has something that they do that's fairly unique. We offer AP microeconomics now and we're looking at some sort of horticulture and pre, that actually was a very popular thing in the survey that I did. We're looking at some things along those lines that other schools don't have as well. And the possibility that even something like manufacturing, that does require a lot of infrastructure, students from schools that don't have it, there can be multiple locations where they can go. So they can just go to the closest one for the in-person piece, which could be us. We do have that. We have, it's, MacWick is the certification. We have the capacity to give that certification. So, you know, we think it's, that there's some pretty great opportunities there and a couple of different models that we're going to look at. And I like the idea there's, the group that's pushing this is really pushing the idea, you know, pilot fast, fail, fail fast, and then figure it out and fix it. But I think the plan to sort of phase it in, I think we can build some interest with the camp. I wish we had more seats that we could do. But then I think moving into that first year, I think we can figure out what's going to work and what's not going to work. And I don't think you're talking a lot of money either. I think it's pretty short money for the opportunities that we'd be able to offer. Some transportation costs might be, you know.
Right. Because there will be a face-to-face component, but when we, when we did the face-to-face with the MIMZI, we secured buses for our students to get there. We shared buses actually with some of the other area towns to get them over to the face-to-face. And those meetings were, you know, those were six, seven hours. I mean.
How many students would you have participating at a time with something like that?
In a MIMZI?
Yeah.
Going across, well, we, depending upon which one it was. So AP Chem, you might have seven or eight kids, but AP English, you might have 35, 40 kids.
Right.
So it depended upon which course you was meeting on the Saturday.
I think it's the same with this too. You know, Hope Dale, I think, is it Hope Dale that's getting the forensic?
Hope Dale's the one that did not do MIMZI.
Okay, but they're looking at, are they the ones that have the possibility at the forensic lab?
Yes, they do. They got a grant for a forensic lab.
They have a grant for a forensic lab. Well, they don't have enough kids to offer. They have a grant for a forensic lab, but they don't have enough kids to offer, to have that lab occupied all day. But, you know, I just did a survey, and out of the first forty kids that filled out the survey, there were thirty-six, I think, that wanted some sort of criminal justice and forensics coursework. So, you know, not everybody can build a forensics lab, but if we can share that resource, you know, Hopedale has that, but then they come here for something that we offer, the MacWick piece, for example. So, that's kind of the idea.
Yes, we're always going with, I guess, the question of the busing is, you know, if we have one student participating in a program in Millbury-
Yeah, we do a waiver form and the parents would have to drive them.
Okay, I got you.
But if you have big numbers, we were taking buses, much like we did with the athletics. The agreement with the committee was that if you've got one student who's qualified for the state meet, and it's, you know, for golf and so forth.
You sign a waiver and you're not sending a whole bus.
They go on their own, right.
Okay, thank you.
But the other piece, based on our conversations this morning in our admin meeting, was that we're now at the time where it's, we're starting to talk about budget season and so forth. And one of the things that we've been very clear in all of this was that there are going to be some needs within our own district that is going to help us to continue to move ourselves forward. This is one of those that is outside the box, but it is all part, it's all part of that whole plan we had for moving forward, which was really looking at about a five-year time schedule. So, hopefully, you know, we can do a good job of talking with the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, as well as your committee, to see the real value in going forward and really promoting these. And there may be some additional staffing that would come out of it, minimal, but it would help us. So, that's going to be a piece of it. There will be some budgeting, for example, on our contract. If Brian McGrath were to teach that AP Micro as an additional course under our contract, there's a $6,000 stipend for teaching that course. Now, each district has different things, so we'd have to sit down and work with all of our individual districts to figure out, okay, what does that mean to Kevin Mainz for teaching an additional class? And get an agreement with the teachers' associations in all the districts to make it all work. So, there is some legwork, that's why we're waiting for the 2021 year to make it happen if we can. But I, again, I think that really on the cutting edge and really an interesting direction that we're going. Because what ends up happening is those things that when Josh does the sign-ups and student sign-ups for course enrollments, and all of a sudden, he finds out he's got three kids that are interested in AP Microeconomics we're talking about, well, he may not be able to offer that AP Microeconomics. But maybe now he can, for the $6,000, our three kids take it, and perhaps ten, twelve other kids have an interest, and now it's vital. And everybody pays in to the cost of the teaching and so forth.
Right.
Share the expenses.
Right.
I forgot to ask you this one, did they talk about the early college at that meeting?
They did a little bit, yeah.
Because Northbridge, I think, has, they, so, community, yeah, Quinsigman Community College has an early college program where basically, high school kids can take college courses, and they pay a very small amount of money. I think it's $500 for the course. Usually, this, what's happened usually is the schools will pay for their books. They meet once in person. Basically, it's just the introductory lesson, the rest of it's done online. Northbridge doesn't fill their seats. QCC is letting them continue to operate. They want to have twenty people in a class, they're letting them operate with eleven, twelve. They've offered those seats to other places, and so that is another model that we can use to collaborate. I told her that we're very interested in doing that.
Well, we've talked about early college for a number of times now, so I think anything we can get to get it started, to jumpstart it, is a real plus.
No, again, I think it's really smart to, again, just, economies of scale are the biggest kind of obstacles that all of our communities are dealing with, I think, with these things, so the more we can, you know, concur with, you know, yeah.
It's a huge opportunity where, and it's going to cost us, you know, a couple hundred bucks for books and a couple hundred dollars for a bus, and we, you know, we've got kids getting college credits for very short money, so.
Great.
And you have a follow-up subcommittee meeting?
January, first, second week in January.
So, with regards to the April break camp, are there a certain number of seats available to Douglas specifically? Have they figured that out?
Would we hear two?
I was told two for each district.
Two for each district, okay.
Right. And they'll revisit that, and that's what the next meeting, we'll get more information out of that next meeting, the subcommittee meeting, as they really work out the finer points. But I'll tell you, one of the things that is very different about this in whether I've been in principals' meetings or now superintendents' meetings is there's a lot of talk, but not a lot of action. This one has got, has some action going with it. So, that's the important piece, is that there's interest and there's people who are actively working on all of this. So, I think it's-
Has the subcommittee addressed, I guess, admission or selection criteria? Yeah, if you do have limits on seats and, you know, more than you-
Right, so they're going to, that's-
That's a great problem to have.
No, it'd be great, yeah, just, yeah.
No, we didn't, we didn't talk about that, yeah.
Great.
Thank you for hanging around, Mr. Ramon.
No, thank you, I'm going to go down and play bongos with the band and-
Okay, well, Energy Crebs.
Energy Crebs.
Those who might know who that is, anybody, anyone?
Um, Flug Bob.
No. Anyone?
That's Mr. Krabs.
Energy Crebs. Nobody?
I'm too young.
Dobie Gillis.
Dobie Gillis.
Oh, God, yeah, no, I'm too young for that.
Dobie Gillis showed Bob Denver, was Gilligan.
Oh. Now, Gilligan I know, but anything be for that.
Energy Crebs. He was a beatnik on Dobie Gillis, he played the bongos.
Wasn't nearly as good as me. Can I post?
Thank you. So, that's the superintendent's report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mainz. So, with that, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have our December fifth meeting minutes.
The school committee, subcommittee.
School committee, subcommittee.
Over entire section, thank you, okay. Our school committee, subcommittee report, first, accounts payable report, thank you.
Okay, on the sixth, I signed fifteen batches totaling three eighty-four, four fifty oh one. And on the thirteenth, five batches totaling one hundred and fifty thousand, ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents.
Excellent.
That's about it.
Getting busier, huh, as we go along? Any questions on that? Okay.
From a budget subcommittee, I haven't typed up my notes yet, I apologize, I'll have those for us for next time. But had a few topics, primarily technology, which we're going to have Don up in a little bit to talk about that. A discussion of some technology needs, both for the current year, as well as going into next year, and even a little bit longer-term planning around technology. We discussed the appendix A grid, the steps and lanes, and just the upcoming negotiations in meetings with the DTA on that in order to kind of get those steps and lanes leveled out a little bit. And I think, do we have any word on target date for a meeting?
Two dates to consider is the fifteenth or the seventeenth.
Of January?
Of January, yes. So, if you could get back to me, maybe look at that, and if you get a chance to get back to me tomorrow, I can then reach out to them. They are thinking, they were originally, their committee seems to be dwindling a little bit. It was originally going to be five, now it looks like it's going to be three, maybe four.
Okay.
So, whatever their number is, is the number that we would have, so.
Okay.
We'll go from there, so I'll know better probably in a week or so, so I can let you know and-
Sounds good.
But I would think it would be myself, Courtney, and the two of you if it's four, and one of the two of you if it's three.
Okay, sounds good.
We also discussed, a very brief discussion of the town budget expectations and just where we are there. We don't really have a lot right now, but just, you know, getting prepared, knowing that it is budget season, so no that's coming up. Just the discussion around buses and whether it makes sense for us to be leasing or owning any buses, whether it be for regular transportation or special ed transportation. Just had, again, a brief discussion around some of the pros and cons of that. And then it wrapped up with just a bit of a special education conversation around some potential out-of-district placements for this year and into the future, so.
Assessments, but not necessarily placements at this point, but assessments.
Yeah, assessments on that.
And the other thing we talked about was buses was also possibly just vans instead of buses.
Yeah, I was going to say that, yeah, and again, I think with this collaborative, vans might, you know, make some more sense as a transportation option, you know, for us, so, yeah. So, that was budget subcommittee update. And then I just wanted to provide an update on the MASC conference that I went to. It's actually MASC, M.A.S.S., joint conference, right? I was only able to attend one day of the conference. I had a pet emergency that got me home on the second day of it. But I attended six sessions that first day, it was very educational for me, it was good. I attended the role of the chair, efficient meetings session, which Julian will be thrilled about with the efficiency meeting side. I don't have to have her kicking me so much, so I can keep things going, but. Some interesting stuff, then I'll have some follow-ups, I think, for the whole group on some things that came up during that. The general session for everyone was just a post-election, post-mortem. Not a lot came out of that, it was, you know, just a lot of grumbling about kind of, you know, where things are nationally, politically, and, but didn't seem like a lot of it really came down to anything that would impact Douglas directly. So, it was entertaining, but not a lot learned there. After that, I attended the MASC Division Four meeting, so we're part of Division Four. All got together there, just talk about, I guess, Division Four holds a couple sessions a year for all the schools in their division, for the school committee members. Just talk about topics that we want to cover. One of the overwhelming one was school start times. I think there's several districts looking at later start times for their middle and high school. But we also know that means earlier start times potentially, at least for us, for your elementary and primary schools. So, and they also feel it makes sense to have entire, you know, the entire district to go. It's, you know, especially with athletic schedules and whatnot, it's tough to have one school make a switch and everyone else doesn't, and when do practice times start, so they wanted to have a joint session on that. And then another session they looked at was promoting inclusiveness and reducing bullying. I think it's a topic that I think our school is doing well on, but it sounds like some schools were struggling with that. You know, so I didn't have any objections for us, you know, participating in that. Next was high schools transitioning from traditional to student-centered models. I was very excited about this session and was very disappointed in the end of it. And it was a teacher who had, I think she was working on it, maybe her doctorate, and she had done a bunch of research around this. Kind of just got to some conclusions I think we've already reached, and some of the things we're doing already almost seemed a little ahead of what she had to offer during the session. But it was good to see that other folks, you know, thinking along the same ways. And then the last was student vaping, which I think was like three days after we had our big student vaping issue. Just, my learnings there, jointly, the feeling was punitive punishments not really effective when it comes to preventing or reducing vaping. There were some new state regs, I think, were introduced the week after the conference that will make it more difficult for youth, I think, anyone under twenty-one to purchase the vaping materials. And just overall, education is key. We did discuss, you know, some of the options we were looking at around in-house suspensions and, you know, education programs, you know, and a writing component to go with it. You know, folks seem interested in that, and I think some folks will probably even take it away and consider it themselves.
Yeah, so Desi and Matt have received some inquiries as to, you know, where we're at with it. And there has been one or two students who have already at the high school have been part of it. I mean, the goal of it is, A, to get them to understand the health risks associated with it, and B, is to get, is to end the behavior.
Yeah.
It's no different than when I was in school in the nineteen sixties and seventies, with the cigarette roll idea.
Right.
No different.
Yeah, and, you know, since it came up, I've noticed a lot more around ad campaigns, similar to the ones that, you know, the truth ad campaigns that kind of got to really reduce some of the smoking, there's a lot more of that. As well as, I think, my Facebook feed this week was filled with just articles around the dangers of vaping and whatnot, so.
And we've explored some programs, most of them are a little bit too expensive at this point. But we can do, we believe that we've got the people in-house that can do some stuff, community meetings and so on. So, that's going to be our tact. I actually have a document, that I think is a great document, that I'd love to send home to middle school and high school parents, because if I ask the kids to take them home, I might just as well throw them away. So, if we mail them out, I think it's really, it's produced by the federal government, but it's very informative, very detailed, and it might be just enough for parents to look at and say, hey, wait a second, this really is pretty serious. And then we can enlist their support a little bit as well.
Yeah.
But there's a, you know, to mail it, there's a cost for mailing things out and so forth, so.
But overall, good concert, good conference, you know, met some nice folks. I met some other school business managers, had some chats with them during dinners and lunch. I had dinner with a bunch of folks from Cambridge, they were fascinated with Douglas. There was like four of them at the table, I just mean from Douglas, and they had so many questions about Little Old Douglas. It was crazy.
What's different than Frank Doug?
Yeah, night and day.
Yeah, night and day, yeah.
I mean, just their diversity alone, and then not only that, enrollment alone.
I think it's a six-hundred-million-dollar, six-hundred-fifty-million-dollar budget.
The kinds of problems that we deal with. I kept them entertained for a good forty-five minutes at dinner.
I've actually, at conferences, the first question is-
Where's Douglas?
Where is that?
Oh, yeah.
Down by the three corners of the three states.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
How big is your school? About twelve hundred kids. An high school? That's often what happens, but.
All right, so now we can move on to our consent agenda.
Yep.
And our first item there is our meeting minutes, which I failed to read today. So, I don't know if anyone else has had a chance to look at them, and has any thoughts on errors or omissions with them? It was a fairly brief meeting on the fifth, if I remember correctly, so.
It was.
Some under votes. Not seeing any issues. Folks want a couple more minutes to read through, I don't mind that. We're making a pretty good time tonight, so. If no one has any issues, I'll look for a motion.
I move that we approve this book committee minutes from our December fifth meeting.
Motion from Julie to approve.
Second.
Second from Kelly, okay. Any other discussions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone approve? Seeing none. Okay, next up, policy for use and improvement upon town properties and facilities. So, I, we emailed this a few weeks ago, actually, right after our last meeting. Suzanne King, town, looking for our input, asking if we had considered this yet. I'm like, this is the first I've seen of it, so we have not considered anything with it yet. It seems like mostly a town policy. I think the genesis of this policy was the issues that happened over the summer with the painting of the tiger mural at the municipal center. So, I think out of that came an effort to kind of shore up their policy around making improvements to town facilities. There's not much here that concerns the school, other than I think they're going to be looking to us to provide them with a list of, I'll read the paragraph. In the first instance, the Board of Selectment, School Committee, Recreation Commission, Planning Board, Building Facilities Construction Committee, Cultural Commission, Historical Preservation Commission, and Cemetery Commission shall complete, compile a list of items that will be covered by this policy. The list will be collected by the town administrator and presented to the Board of Selectmen and placed on the board's agenda for public hearing.
So, Brett, we have, we've begun that process of identifying that which might be considered historical, social, cultural, or otherwise.
Okay. Do we need any help with that?
So, no, I think that I've asked each principal to sort of give me a rundown of what's in their buildings. I think we talked about it today at the meeting, and one of the things that we talked about was, so, for example, the gym floor in the, in the high school. The logo was changed probably two, three years ago. Now, it resembles the logo that we have on all of our letterheads and everything.
Yeah.
So, if something, if they were going to, you know, redo the floor, the understanding would be that they couldn't just change the logo in the Senate Court, that it would have to go through a process to make sure that we are being culturally sensitive and so forth as to what fits in that category. There's a plaque on the way in the building at the high school for the building committee. Each of the buildings have those plaques and so forth. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of great, big numbers of items and so forth. You know, we were talking about the class gifts that might be up there, so for example, the tiger and some of the other things that are in, there were some documents and so forth in some of the buildings, you know.
Martin Luther King and, yeah, Martin Luther King and Avery, because I love those paintings.
The entrance walls of the high school.
So, there's a couple of pieces of art that are there that would be considered. So, just, we've started compiling a list of things. There's no, there's no original, you know, document from the seventeen twenties that's housed in our library or anything like that. We don't have any, there are some things, and Cindy did mention that there were a couple of items in her library, pictures that are in the, that are in a closet that were of the old Gleason Court and Gleason Building, I'm sorry, the old VFW school, I don't even know what the old VFW school was, but, okay. But there's some things that they have, but there's not a lot, but we'll make a list.
Yeah.
And get it to the town administrator for-
Okay. And I, the thing I was more worried about was things outside of our four existing buildings, so the old-
buildings, so the old elementary school, is there anything still there that needs to be preserved? Is there anything else in the municipal center that's, that used to be a school that we're aware of, that maybe someone in the town isn't aware of?
I thought everything came with us, but we could probably do that.
Yeah, that's, you know, 'cause again, that mural was an old mural from, back in the days when that was a high school, so is there anything else there that, you know, we might be aware of that the town isn't aware of, that, you know, should be preserved in the name of the schools?
Okay.
So that's the part I was worried about, more than the existing buildings.
So we're, so we're on that process, which is what came out to us, and we will be compiling the list, and basically, more importantly, we talked about being aware of what's in your building, and being aware, if somebody's looking to make a change, that there should be a process in place to, don't just simply change it, you know, much like we talked about the room downstairs, changing the structure of that room, we didn't just change the structure of the room, we went through the committee to make sure that they were on board with us changing the structure of the room.
That reminds me, at the municipal center, there's a large portrait there that, because I do a lot of research, historical research, that I took a picture of it, Mike Gazinski was here, and I was starting to research in Boston to find out who that's a portrait of, because nobody knows.
Oh, a portrait of a person.
It reminded me, I gotta get back to that at some point.
Okay. So I guess we're just looking for a motion to accept the policy, the town's policy as written here, and to agree to participate in the compiling of the...
I thought that's what you was looking for, that the committee has voted to accept it.
Yeah, that's what I, that's how I saw it. So I'd be looking for a motion to accept the policy as written, and agree to participate in the compiling of items to be covered under the, under the policy.
You know, because the other piece, not to get in the way of the vote, is that the facilities use and so forth, we have a facilities use structure and format in place, this is really about the municipal center and other, the library and things such as that.
Yeah, I think it's just saying that we don't have any issue with the town's policy, they're looking for our feedback, so I just, you know, I think the formal way to give that feedback is to say that.
Do we wanna, do we wanna table it and find out whether they want us to take a formal vote on it?
I don't, yeah, I don't think that, yeah.
So we can at least get back to them and say that we have discussed it, we have a plan in place.
Yeah, I'll just let her know that we have, we've discussed, and we don't have any, well, do we have any issues with it, anyone see any concerns with that, so.
So we'll table in case there's a vote, in case we need a vote later.
Okay, that's, that works.
Good.
And lastly, Donna wanted to join us. We have a request for Chromebooks for the middle school.
Yes, we're looking to buy a hundred and thirty Chromebooks that will be used for testing at the middle school for this year, for the, the current devices at the middle school, or the iPad fours, they are gonna be no longer supported for testing, so by buying the hundred and thirty Chromebooks, which, this is the model right here, we will be able to do one grade's worth of testing at a time with those Chromebooks, so it will enable us to keep up with our online testing.
Great.
The self-contained keyboard is an important piece for us, but I think Donna's other point is that you need to have some certainty that a student's test is going to be completed and be transferred and be counted, and some of the iPad fours are a little bit older, and there's a little concern that they may not be the best tool for us to be testing with.
Actually, we are starting to have problems with them, 'cause as the batteries get old, they don't hold the charge for a long time, and we are actually starting to have troubles with kids who are taking longer to do the test, running out of charge during the test, and having to swap out devices in the midst of the test, which can be disruptive to the student.
Sounds like something that we have to say yes to, then.
It's part of a bigger perspective that we have as well. I mean, it's a starting piece, the plan would be that the, these would stay at the, at the middle school for this year for testing, and if we approve purchasing one-to-ones like we've had at the middle school going forward, for the following year, we could then transition those down to the elementary school, they would then have the benefit of them for the testing down at the, at the elementary school, as well as being able to share them within the grade level, so all four grade levels will get a certain number on a cart, so they would have an additional, updated, more, more recent technology to use in their classrooms, kind of a bigger picture of it all. And all we need is some money.
It's too bad that the state doesn't help fund something like that when they require it. There's no money out there, huh?
That has been the argument from, from most people, there are still some schools who have filed for a waiver, and they're doing, they're still doing the paper model, because they just don't have the technology at this point.
Oh, so that would be the other alternative, is paper.
But I think once you do it online, I think, I don't know that you can...
The high school has not, so this will be the first time for the high school doing it online, but, so we have done it already, so.
Well, it's something that eventually we'll need, so.
And it's, and it's, it's important that everybody understands it's not just for the MCAS testing, it will be, they will be used.
Oh, right, oh, yes.
But the primary reason why we want this is to make sure that when the kids are taking a test, that we have up-to-date and current technology that will support the testing.
Right.
Yeah, and again, this is the first step in a, you know, a short-term, short-to-medium term planning around, you know, refreshing devices, you know, really across, across all of our schools over the, over the next several years, you know, if, as budget allows, but I think we're hopeful that, well, at some point, I think some changes have to be made over the next few years with, across a few of the schools, but we'd like to be able to refresh all of them at some point, so.
The iPads are getting old enough now that even for classroom use, the newer apps won't run on them, they're not compatible with certain things, and they're physically starting to fail.
Yeah, and I, we discussed, I'm not sure if it's really important for this conversation, but the iPads that we currently have in the middle school will be sent to the elementary school, was that the plan?
Yes, we'll go through them, get them, the ones that are still in enough shape, we'll move them down, so.
Which is, which is a plus, 'cause now they've got some iPad fours, they'll have some of the Chromebooks that'll be available, and for the technology if they all need.
So not only will the middle school benefit from, from this, the elementary school will get some residual benefit out of it as well.
Right now, they have iPad too, so.
Why do we do Chromebooks? Is that because we do a lot of stuff through Google?
We do, we have, I emailed Google Suite we use, so everything is on like Google Docs, so these are compatible with that, we've got the keyboard built in, and they are just more for doing work, they just work better, they're just more compatible with more things. The iPads have their strengths for different types of things, and I think as long as we have iPads that are still functioning, you know, we, we will hold on to them, and they will, they're good for being used, like there's a digital design class where they're taking, doing videos with them, and doing iMovie, and that's kind of functions the iPads are great at, but for, when the kids are writing, it's, it's difficult to do significant writing on an iPad, it's not, I mean, obviously, we've been doing it, it's possible, but it's easier on the Chromebooks, and we've just, in conversations, decided that for academics, the Chromebooks seem to be more compatible.
Right.
What about durability? Are they more durable, like?
Um, it depends. Now, this model here that I wanna go with is like, I picked up, picked this model because they actually sent me a, they sent me a demo unit to try, and we actually, because they had sent, first they sent me a video, and showed it some agricultural school them testing this, they had like, you know, the marching band walking on it, they had a cow stepping on it, they would, and it was still working, and I'm like, oh, okay.
I mean, you obviously put covers on them anyway, but still, right?
No, this one, I'm not sure I would need to.
I don't know, we do, we have them on the high school ones now, right?
Yeah, the high school ones, yeah.
But, so we had these two, and myself and Mrs. Brown, part of our tech team, we set out to put it through its paces.
Oh, wow.
I've thrown it...
Did you put it down a flight of stairs?
Yes, we did, yes. What finally did break the screen is, but we did, I knocked it off the tables, I, you know.
Stuff that would happen.
Yeah, I put stuff on top of it, Mrs. Brown slammed the cover down with keys on the keyboard, because that's a big cause of the broken screens, is when it gets, the kids put it down with the pen still on there. I dropped it down the sidewalk, I dropped it down the stairs, but what finally did it is, Mrs. Brown stood at the top of like, at the middle school, looking down, so it was like two flights, and just dropped it straight down, and that finally cracked the screen, but even with the screen cracked, you could still use it.
Right.
So I said, all right, this is, this is the model we wanna go with.
That's great.
So.
At the very least, it's a, you know, it closes, so your screen's not exposed during those drops, like an iPad would be, so.
Yeah. Well, it's interesting.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? I think we have language written in our memo from the motion.
I move to approve the purchase of a hundred and thirty Chromebooks for the Douglas Middle School for up to forty-two thousand dollars to be funded by the School Choice Tuition Revolving Fund. Second.
Motion from Kelly, second from Julie, any other discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Okay.
Could I just recognize Mrs. Souza for the careful consideration in, in keeping us technologically sound on a skinny budget? She did a great job of being very pragmatic about how we continue to bring technology to the district.
Thank you.
Sounds like she got to have a little fun, though, now.
I didn't know she was throwing things down the stairs. That's, that's news to me.
It wasn't school, it wasn't school money.
It's all good, though, that's good, I'm glad you took advantage of it.
All right, so now we'll move on to our school business, business and operation manager's report.
I do not have any transfers and reclassifications for you this evening, I will at the next meeting. I did provide to you the FY two thousand nineteen general fund budget report after the all those transfers were posted, so it's a pretty clean-looking report, looking very good, if you go to the last page, the way this is, I have to kind of manually, so what I'm doing there, for those that don't know, the grand total, I have to actually back out the transportation, and back out all of those numbers right, right across, to come down to the operating budget, in other words, relate it to the appropriation for the, the general fund operating budget of the school. So we're doing very well, you can see the balance there that's, that's unencumbered at this time, there's a, a big difference now with the encumbrances in there with the teachers that you saw before, but also the transfers have been done as well, so things are looking fine typically where we would be about this time of the year, so that's a, that's a good thing. We have had some things come up, you know, that we've had a budget for, but moving things around and everything, and with transfers, we've been in good stead throughout the year.
Yeah, that was the other thing, I'm, again, I plotted, we went over during our budget subcommittee, was just where we stand with regards to School Choice, revolving fund. Again, I think we've, we've not dipped too far into that this year, you know, just the forty-two thousand here, but other than that, we haven't really dipped that too far, which I think is in line with, you know, again, some of our thinking with, you know, the Board of Selectmen last year, we said, you know, if we get the override, there's, there's thoughts around, okay, do we invest in a bunch of things right now, or do you keep your powder dry, and I think we're still in that, keeping our powder dry, and we have some opportunities in front of us, which, which is good to know that we, we still have some of that to work with, so it's good, I think we're in a good place.
And, of course, and we've had these conversations too about thinking prospectively, not just one year, but being very prudently conservative with the school rights, particularly the School Choice, the circuit breaker, because of the volatility there, but I think that with all of us working together, and putting aside that contingency as well, in School Choice and circuit breaker, I think we're in, we're in good stead in for moving, moving forward, and we'll see what we can implement going forward, but I think we're doing very well at this point.
One thing about being on a lean budget is you learn to survive on a lean budget.
You certainly do.
Yes.
And to be frugally conservative.
Okay.
That's all I have this evening.
Great, thank you. Any topics not anticipated?
Yes, I have one little thing, just real quickly, just to report back to you, I did check with all of our building principals with regards to the rescheduling of the parent teacher conferences, and they felt that for the most part, they had close to full anticipated conferences that took place on the Wednesday evening, a few, a few that had to cancel, but they have arranged and have had other opportunities to meet with the parents and the teachers, so they've made some arrangements for that, but that for the most part, nobody heard anything back from any, any concerns from parents, nor did the central office here or anything, so just to, just to let you know about the rescheduling, that it, all things considered, it appears to have worked out fine.
Yeah, I think ultimately, we made the right choice, I didn't hear a lot of kind of fallout afterwards, actually, I didn't hear any fallout afterwards.
Right, which is good.
You know, so a little bit of concerns around, okay, what time do I have, or can I reschedule it, or whatever, and I think folks addressed that, you know.
So you saw me split myself in four, 'cause I had to be at the middle school, basketball, high school.
I didn't hear about it, doesn't mean there wasn't any out there, you know.
It was all good.
And then one other thing was that I had planned on doing a one-call tomorrow night at the, at dinner time, just to remind everybody that's early release day on Friday, and wish everybody a happy holidays.
Great, thank you. So do we have any events going on during the break, or the building?
There'll be some basketball and track and so forth, there'll be some things going on for sure. The track, I hear that they did well at Reggie Lewis just the other, last week.
They did, the winter festival, small school winter fest.
Did very well.
Had a new school record in the four by eight hundred.
Four by eight, yeah.
Yep, the girls' four by eight hundred set a new school record, so.
Great. So we do not have any executive session tonight, we're still just working through the contract for Mr. Mainz, I think that should be probably, I imagine, handled by the January second meeting.
I would, I would think it could be more than fine, I've only got one issue that I, I think that we can talk about, and then I think we're good to go.
So our next meeting will be January second, we talked about it last time, everyone should be able to make that, so.
And we'll do executive session there to finalize that.
Yeah, so with that, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn at eight oh six. Who wants to go?
I'd make the motion, but it really doesn't matter.
I'm waiting to see how long.
I have a motion from Julie to adjourn, there are a second?
Second.
And second from Lisa, thank you. Any other discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
Happy holidays, everybody.